Everybody's here, Stacy will be zooming in. Let's have the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Come everybody. First then off, we need to approve the meeting agenda. Nothing, yeah, yes.
I will make a motion.
Make the motion by Brenda.
Right.
Motion by Brenda, second by Greg. Any discussion on the agenda? There is no discussion, all the favor approving agenda, signify by saying aye. It's gonna be a roll call, but it'll be aye if you approve it, so. Andrew?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Agenda carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. I'm gonna address the board. Okay, not hearing anybody, so we'll move on. We have some acknowledgements, we have the fall advisors, coaches and athletes and participants. All state fall student athletes, include boys soccer, all state. How do you pronounce first name?
Sadiq.
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 Sadiq, okay. Farah, girls soccer, all state, Ellie Carlson. Boys cross-country team, all state, academic gold award. Girls cross-country team, all state, academic silver award. Varsity volleyball team, all state, academic gold award. All state academic awards, Morgan Corf. Varsity football team, all state, academic gold award. And all state academic award, awards, McLean-Hovland, honorable mention, so. It's impressive. Anything to add, Mr. Corf?
I wanna thank all our advisors and coaches this past fall and all our student athletes for all their work representing Pelican Rapids and congratulations to all the student athletes that earn state awards and teams, congratulations to all of them.
So, we will move on, we have presentations, so we have Courtney Richmond with Ida Bailey to give us the audit presentation for 2024-25.
Perfect, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, I'll get my screen shared here. Okay, can you see my presentation?
There we go, sound good.
On your phone. Alright, well, good evening everyone, my name is Courtney Richmond, audit partner with Ida Bailey based out of our Fargo, North Dakota office. And this evening, we're gonna go through the district's executive summary, which is really just a high-level summary of the fiscal year 2025 audit results. One thing to caveat, this is still in draft format, it's not completely finalized yet, but don't expect the numbers to change at this point. Okay, so to start off, we're first gonna talk about the audit results and any findings. So our first slide here talks about the audit opinion. So the district received a clean audit opinion for fiscal year 2025. The technical term for this is an unmodified opinion, which essentially means the financial statements are prepared in accordance with standards and do not contain any material misstatements. The second bullet point, towards the bottom there, just brings to your attention that this is nearly our professional opinion. We're not testing 100% of the transactions of the district throughout the audit process. Instead, we do a risk-based approach to really drive the test work that we complete. But based on everything that we tested, once again, your financial statements are in accordance with standards and do not contain any material misstatements. The next slide here is to talk about the audit of federal funds. And this year, this is just a preliminary presentation on the federal funds. So with the federal shutdown and some delays with OMB in Washington DC, the federal government has not yet released the 2025 compliance supplement and that's really the document that drives our federal audit testing. So, we are unable to finalize the federal audit until that compliance supplement is released. But I still will present kind of the preliminary information on the federal audit for 2025. And really, any entity, school district, or any organization that spends more than $750,000 of federal expenditures triggers a separate compliance federal audit. And so really, we're looking at the types of expenses, making sure that you're spending them appropriately. And so for 2025, you can see it off in white and blue there, the district spent just over $822,000 of federal awards and we anticipate that the district will also receive an unmodified opinion specific to the federal audit. Next, we'll jump to the findings. So even though you received a clean audit opinion overall, that doesn't mean that there aren't other significant deficiencies or other control deficiencies that we identified throughout the audit process and so that's what we're gonna bring to your attention here today. So there's three main areas we focus on, first being the financial statements, second being the federal awards, and then lastly, looking at state compliance. So for the financial statements, there were five findings, which will be, we'll go through here. The first being the preparation of the financial statements, including the schedule of expenditures of federal awards or the CIPA. Really, this just has to do with the fact that Ida Bailey prepared the full financial statements of the district at year end, including all of the required footnote disclosures. So this is a very common finding, not only for school districts, but a lot of the clients that we audit. And this is something that you've had in the past as well, so nothing new to report there. The next finding relates to material journal entries. So as we come in and do the audit and do the testing, we do end up proposing some adjustments to kind of true-up balances at the end of the year. So that's what that finding relates to, again, common for school districts and something you've had in the past. The third one is segregation of duties. This just really has to do with the fact that the district has a smaller office size when it comes to the finance function, so you're not able to completely segregate all of the different financial duties of the district. Again, very common for smaller schools, something you've had in the past. The fourth one here is lack of supporting time cards for hourly employee pay. So with this one, as we're doing our testing, there's instances where there's not time cards to support the hours that are being worked by your hourly specific employees. So, I know the district is making an effort to really promote the clocking in and clocking out every day and that's just important from an audit perspective, just to ensure that you have kind of that supporting documentation for what those hourly individuals are being paid for. The last one to bring to your attention is just failure to maintain credit card receipt support. So there were just two transactions that we tested where the receipt related to the credit card purchase wasn't maintained, so that's what that one relates to. The next area we look at is the federal awards. Again, this is not finalized, it's preliminary, as we wait for that compliance supplement, but at this stage, we have identified one finding related to activities allowed or unallowed and allowable costs and cost principles. So this one kind of correlates back to that supporting time card finding in the financial statement section. There were just instances noted of specific child nutrition-related wages where there weren't the time cards to support what they got paid. The last area here is Minnesota legal compliance, and so there were two findings identified, the first being inactive student activity accounts. And so, with the student activity groups, basically the state says if, if an activity group is inactive for 12 months, so if they don't have any fundraising or any expenses during the school year, really, either the group should be closed or there just needs to be a formal written plan in place as to why that activity group is staying open. So, you had instances where there were some activity groups that didn't have activity during fiscal year 25, there just wasn't that approved plan in place for keeping it open. And then the last one relates to approval of student activity fund disbursements. So for every student activity expense, there's kind of a requisition form that goes along with it and really, that form requires three signatures, the student, the advisor, and then the principal. And so, there were instances during our testing where one or more of those required signatures was missing from the student requisition form. Our next slide here is a new slide this year for GAZBIE 101 implementation. So, GAZBIE 101 is a new standard that relates specifically to compensated absences. So when we think of this, it has to do with sick leave, any personal time, vacation, things like that. So this new standard was effective for the June 30, 2025 audit. It's effective for all governmental entities, so every government has to implement this standard. And so really, it just brought on additional liabilities onto your government-wide financial statements related to those different types of leave. Now we'll dive more into some of the numbers of the district. So our first slide here is on the cash and investments. So this slide is showing you your cash and investments in thousands for the past 10 years. So you can kind of see how you've been trending over time, overall for 2025, just a slight dip from the previous year, but relatively consistent with the past few years. Next, we'll dive into more general fund-specific information. So the first slide I'm gonna show you here is the ADM served. So this is essentially your student counts and we like to show this because the number of students you have is really what drives the aid that you get from the state. So overall there in 2025, you can see a decrease in the number of students enrolled and so that kind of correlates with some of the revenue that you get from the state of Minnesota. Our next slide here is the main numbers page we'll go through. This is the district's budget to actual results for 2025. The first two columns there, you can see are the approved budget. The third column is the actual results and then on the far right, you can see any variance between the final budget and the actual results. So on the revenue side of things, the district brought in less revenue than you budgeted for mainly due to those decreased student counts. So you didn't get quite as much revenue from the state as you had budgeted for, but overall, you were within 3% of the revenue budget. On the expense side of things, you spent slightly more than you budgeted for by $226,000, but that's overall within 1.7% of the budget. And then kind of the key takeaway on this slide towards the bottom is that net change in fund balance. So in that third column, you can see, overall, the district did spend more than you brought in in revenue, which decreased your general fund fund balance by $239,000 during fiscal year 25, leaving you with an ending fund balance of just over $3 million. So what does this positive $3 million fund balance mean? Ultimately, it can contribute to favorable bond ratings, should you need to issue additional debt. It gives the district opportunity to produce some investment income. But lastly, it really just offers you kind of a cushion in case you have any revenue shortfalls or any expenses that come about that maybe you hadn't planned for. Our next slide here is showing the five different fund balance categories. So I'm not gonna go in-depth on what each of these is, but our next series of slides is gonna break down the district's $3 million of general fund fund balance by these different types. So this next slide here is showing you the fund balance at the beginning of the year, the change for the year, and then on the far right, you can see kind of that ending $3 million that we previously talked about. And this is broken down by the different types of fund balance. So that non-spendable at the top is anything that's considered inventory or prepaid expenses of the district. Anything that is designated as restricted is restricted by the state of Minnesota, so you have to use that for a designated purpose. Anything that's assigned is set aside by the district for something that you're choosing to use the funding for. And then lastly, you're left over what that unassigned portion and that's really that cushion that you can use in case you have any expenses that pop up that maybe you weren't planning for. The next slide shows the fund balance by category over the last 10 years, so you can kind of see how you've been trending. Overall, relatively consistent between '24 and '25 there, with the darker blue portion being that unassigned portion and then the green being that restricted piece by the state. So the state, as they come up with more and more types of different aid, typically, there's restrictions associated with that revenue that you're getting from the state. Next is some recommendations regarding your fund balance. So on the top here, we have the district's approved fund balance policy. So your district has set aside this policy to maintain unassigned general fund fund balance between 22% and 25% of the annual budget. So the target range for fiscal year 2025 was between 2.9 million and 3.3 million. We do also just include kind of a third-party recommendation on this slide from the Government Finance Officers Association. They recommend having at least two months' worth of expenses in your unassigned fund balance, which equates to 16.67%, and the target amount with that recommendation would be having over $2.2 million. So the next slide really shows you where you're at in comparison to your approved district policy. So those two green lines in the slide is that, that range of 22% to 25% that you as a district have wanted to keep that fund balance between. So you can see there in 2025, you are slightly below, but relatively consistent there with the previous year. Next, we'll dive into a couple of the other funds of the district, the first being the community service fund. So this slide is showing you the ending fund balance over the last 10 years. So you can see just a slight increase there in 2025 in your community service fund, but relatively consistent over the past few years. And lastly, this slide, next slide shows you the same information for the food service fund. Now, the green line that's in the middle of this page is actually showing you the maximum fund balance that you can have in this fund. You can see over the last four years, you have exceeded that maximum. And really, a lot of that has to do with the additional COVID free meals that were given and then the last two years, the free meals that have kicked in from the state. So you are receiving, you know, overall free meals, so that's increased the revenue in the related fund balance. There's no finding or anything associated with having in excess of that maximum. However, the state, they just ask how the district plans to spend down that fund balance. So that's all I have for you this evening, does anybody have any questions on anything that I went through?
Does anybody, anybody have any questions? I'm not hearing anything, so.
Sounds good. Well, I do just wanna take a minute and say thank you to Rudy and everybody who helped with the audit, we definitely appreciate it. And if anybody does have questions, feel free to reach out, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Rudy. Anybody have any questions there? Okay. We'll move on. We have a community education presentation, this is on here. Two months in a row?
Yes, one more, one more time in here. So this is our annual report for 2024-25. This program, Mr. Howgrew and I work together on, so he is the one that arranges all the classes, works with all the people that are coming in, and I do the numbers and the advertising for it. So, our contents are just gonna, we're just gonna go through our goals, our programs, the annual report for last year, and then just talk a little bit about some things that we're doing for this year. Our goals remain the same, we have four primary goals, providing quality pre-K to 12 and adult programs, promoting activities, events, and classes in the Pelican Rapids community, maintaining a balanced budget, and collaborating with the district to share the seven habits. The programs that are part of the community ed budget include summer rec, youth enrichment, adult classes, adult basic ed, driver's education, school-age childcare, early childhood education. So the next page just talks about the participants that we had last year by category. So the largest by far was recreation and that included some of our winter open gym, open pickleball, some of our summer rec activities, speed and strength, you can just kind of see the, the listing that we had. Enrichment was 172 people. That was some of our summer camps, summer steam, theatrical, and then some things that we did throughout the year. Learning includes our homework help at the high school. We do a babysitter class, we've done the estate planning class, that's been well-attended, and then adult basic ed and our driver's education fall in this category as well. And then the last is our Club Vikes childcare. On the next page, I just kind of highlighted the different summer rec activities just so you could see how that broke down. We had 197 kids that participated in 285 different activities. So you can see next to each activity, how many, you know, the breakdown of that, how many kids were in each of the activities. Those numbers are about the same that we've had across the years. That's as far as the total number of kids and the number of activities that they signed up for. Speed and strength did add a grade four to six last summer and their attendance was 100 for all of the grades with that. And then the open gym and walking track averaged about 26 people a day. Any questions so far? Participants, just kind of by age category, we had a total of 1,507 participants and so you can just kind of see the age category breakdown on that chart. Lot of kids, lot of activities for kids and, and a lot of recreation kind of seem to be the themes here. The next page is talking about our adult basic education. So for last year, there was about 59 students served. They had classes four days a week and this has been at the public library still. This coming year, they started a new schedule, so they're gonna be Monday through Friday. They also have a new instructor named Shirley Janu. She was a science teacher in Sartell. And as of October 7th, they had 24 participants. I think I listed 30 there, but it was actually 24. That was just starting the new schedule July 1st and they also were closed for about a month, just trying to get some things done, a transition. So they were really excited that they were, had that many students signing up. Early childhood education is on our next page. And this is just talking about our Viking preschool, breakdown by age. So age three, which is two days a week, there were 26 students and the VPK, five days a week, there were 45 in 2024-25. We also have our ECFE program. The main class that she's been running the last few years is the Magical Mondays. That's every Monday from 5:30 to 7:00, that's a parent-child class ages zero to five. Last year, there was 384 times that people attended, so there's 26 sessions and total number of kids that came were 25. And obviously, they had a parent, sometimes two parents with on each of those. There's also been family field trips, they're almost monthly. They've done the family pumpkin patch outing a few times. They went through Peteyville last year, there's also some winter open gym. She started one this year, or last year I think too, called Friendsgiving, it was kind of a Thanksgiving fall one. So that's our early childhood. Just a reminder, we're still doing the same things as far as how we're sharing these events and classes and area resources. So we do share things on our website, we have different web pages with our community education. We also have a summer program Facebook page, we have a community ed Facebook page, and then we also have information in our district newsletter. So those are the primary ways that we're getting information out. Just very quick updates, these are just a few numbers so far and this would be starting this next year, which is July into the next June. So, flag football was new this year, that was for grades one and two, they had about 16 kids. Viking Dance Club had 63. Our summer steam camp, there were four kids, summer theater was 29. And then Deb Kohler is hosting some monthly paint classes now, so each month, there's a different theme and so she's had six people so far in the last few months. And then we did start our homework help at the high school. Looking ahead, we're doing a few things. We're reviving our, kind of, we're putting together a digital catalog. So basically, this will just be something that can go on the website. This is something that will be able to be updated ongoing and we can just use it across all platforms. So it's just a way that we can keep everything in one place. So with this one, we're really gonna focus this year on connecting school and community. So what we really want is a place that people can go to see all of the activities that are happening for our kids out in our community, classes we're offering. And so, I'm gonna start with fall and winter and then we'll do a spring and summer. Our first page is just going to, is just welcoming people to our district, different ways they can register, so they can register online, they can call. There'll also be a registration form that I'll put together. Most of it, we do online through our school pay and that's really our preference, but we wanna be really flexible with whatever works out well for people. People that have questions about classes, programs, if they wanna teach a class, share an idea, they can contact Mr. Howgrew. And we also have some different, these are the different ways that we stay in touch, the Facebook pages that we have through the school, community ed, and again, our summer programs. So this catalog is gonna have information, some are district, some are community ed, some are things in the community. Again, our goal is just everything in one place. The next page is just gonna be our contents, I don't have those pages done yet, this is still in draft form. The next one is our youth activities for the school year. So what we wanna do is just have, again, a place that parents can go, they can see what do we have in the fall, the winter, and the spring, and the school year. So I still need to fill details in here. The QR code will lead to a page on our website where there will be registration forms that they can fill out. Many of the programs, we have a paper form, so they could download a PDF, but most of them, we do on our school pay online. There's also information in here about our walk to school days, so we have three of those a year. We do offer the babysitting course once a year, so we will have that again in the spring. And then just some information about family connections, so some of the family game nights that are held at the elementary school and then just putting some parent-teacher conference information in here. Questions so far? The next page is just showing our youth activities, grade seven through 12. And again, that'll just have the details filled in with the QR code where they can go to get the information. Also, our student groups and activities, grade seven through 12. So we've got the different student groups here. We have some student learning, including driver's education, we have our after-school homework help, and we have our credit recovery program. Youth activities in the summer, this is just a highlight of what we have. Again, in the summer, when we do the, the catalog, we'll have all the details. But again, the goal was just kind of one snapshot, one place parents can look and just see, okay, what do we have for kids? Also, we'll be able to highlight some of the community activities and events and right now, we do that on the school website, we have links that go out. So we wanna really continue to do that, we really wanna share what's happening here so that we're all enjoying the different programs and events that we have in this community. Club Vikes is the next page, so we have school year hours and we have summer hours. And this is something that we really wanna highlight, that we have this program available, 11 hours a day, basically, all year round, it's pretty exciting. Recreation, we have our open skating. That was really well-attended last year, we'll do that again this year. Chauncey Martin, we've got the warming house, the year-round restroom, so we wanna also make sure we're highlighting this facility that So we want to also make sure we're highlighting this facility that we have, getting that information out to the public. And we'll have open gym again. Last year, that ran from January into mid-March. We are also going to do open pickleball again. I think this is our third year of doing that. That'll be Monday nights, that's starting December first, and that will run through the end of February. Questions? Some of the activities and classes that we have. Right now, again, we're going to have the monthly painting. We also have some music classes that'll be through Zoom. And when I did look at some of the other districts and what they're offering through community ed, that is a pretty common thing now, is having some online classes or some Zoom classes. These two will actually be group classes that they could attend one night, either if they want to do piano or guitar. Mr. Johnson's going to do a drawing class again, internal life drawing, so that was a really popular one. And then we're also going to do our estate planning class again. And that one, I think this is our third or fourth year. That one is always well-attended. I've left some spacing here because, again, what I want to do is be able to keep adding and updating this and just kind of moving and flowing with some things as we go. But one of the things we'll do is just make sure we have places that people can submit information if they want classes, you know, if they want to teach a class, whatever that might be. So QR codes, different things that we're soliciting that information. And also, we can share some district information in here about our district, which is great. Our CBL class we're still offering. Again, these will, the size of these, some of these will shift and flow as we add more classes. Music and theater. We're really excited about Lori Line coming, so that's coming up a week from Wednesday, and Mr. Haugrude has worked really hard on that, so thank you. Also, we'll list all of our band and choir concerts here. So again, it's just that idea of one place we can look, community can look and see what's happening. We'll have our theater performances listed there as well. Just a district ad for now that we have in there. Our Lakes Area Adult Education hours and information. Early childhood education. This will just have our information about our preschool. Got an ad in here. We also want to get some photos, so those are the pieces that I want to make sure that we can add to this. And we have our little Viking guy, which everybody likes, so we'll keep him going. Viking preschool, again, we'll add some more photos here. And the things that we really want to highlight are the, that it's free preschool, that we have the midday transportation. So those are pieces that we're putting into our ads, as well as information we can put in here. ECFE, then, our Magical Mondays for this year. And then we'll just keep listing the different field trips that are coming up and staying in touch. So there's also the Facebook page that information is posted on as well for that. The next page, just just information about the importance of reading and our Head Start preschool program. And then community. In this one, again, we really want to keep building on. These are just a few things so far about our Chauncey Martin building, talking about our trail head, heart of the Lakes, you know, the bike trail, Maplewood State Park, DNR, Pelican Rapids events. So have the links to the Chamber. So we just get people in that habit of looking. So here's where you can look to see what's happening, and we'll just keep sharing as much as we can. The public library has a lot of really amazing things, from programs to items that you can check out. So things like life jackets, snowshoes, e-bikes, Maplewood State Park entrance sticker. So that's kind of information we want to be able to share as well. And then we'll have our Peteyville. That's just an important piece of our community as well. And then, again, just a little extra space here so we can keep adding as we go along. So I'm hoping to have this done in the next few weeks and then post it up on the website and do a post out on Facebook just saying, hey, come here, take a look. So that's where that stands. So any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, I have a quick question. Wondering how would a community organizations, like, how would you like them to reach out to you? What things that they would like maybe added to the community page?
Email, that's something I could put in the catalog as well. Is, yeah, they can email, they can call. I have my information in the front under registration, but, yeah, we can just make sure that we stress that as well. Because we do want to get information, we do want to share that. And I could also get in touch with the Chamber and some other groups, too, and just reach out and share this with them and let them know if there's things that they want to add.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is fantastic, because it's something that community needs.
Well, thank you. Anything else?
This one's a good review. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Hey, Mr. Nelson, do you have a elementary report for us?
K through six enrollment, we're at four fifty-nine. BPK stays at forty-two. Three-year-olds, twenty-eight, and Head Start at thirty-two. We had about eighty people at Title One Bingo Night, and even Mr. Green was a winner that night. I think the girls locked up with several books each, and it was a good turnout, good time, and thanks for all the people, parents and students that came, George. Title One, and thanks to the teachers for all their organization of getting it organized and ready. We had ninety-five percent of parents show up for conferences. That's, student had either one or both. So ninety-five percent of them had someone come to conferences, so gained great attendance. And thank you to the parents for making that a priority, to come in and have a conference with their teachers. So the big thank goes to them and the teachers for their time preparing and having the conferences on that day. And sectional leadership team, we've been, this year's looking at language arts. Last year, we've been working on math, got a new curriculum, and decided in our last meeting to go with UFLY. UFLY is a phonics curriculum. And so each teacher will get a book like this, and it's very well laid out, where all the lessons are laid out for the teachers to follow. They will give a test and then figure out where the starting point is for their class, and then what lesson that goes to, to where they start. And with this, they also get free access to slides for their Promethean boards, so nothing they have to create it, everything will be there for them. And these books, the cost is fairly cheap, at seventy dollars per teacher. So for a curriculum, there's no other cost, no other materials needed. One of the big things we found is we're lacking in phonics. So this will help get our phonics caught up, and it'll be a very good curriculum. It's ordered, so hopefully, I was told it should be your middle of December. So hopefully, in January, all the teachers are kicked off with UFLY phonics, helping all students be able to decode words better, more effectively. Couple other things, accept the resignation at least at camp. Parent professional, and then hire Emily Evenson. Not that Emily, the one that formerly worked itself out. And then also Lucas Perdora is a parent professional at Viking Elementary. Any questions?
Any questions?
They do have different emails, so interested how many ones. We'll maybe get the wrong email here. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I have two different reports. I'll start off with dean of students. You know, my goal right away was to build relationships with student staff and community members, so I've been busy doing that, helped for them on. So staff has been very supportive and really enjoyed my time thus far. Others, tracking referrals and tracking attendance. Roughly out of our three hundred and seventy-five students, we've had averages of two-point-three absences. I believe that's only hours, so that's including acceptable to use or unexcused all quarter one. So our students are in school. Unexcused, five hundred and seventy-six for the total. A lot of our, if we move on to fall activity participation, you can see over half of our students are involved. Football, volleyball, cross-country, soccer, musical, FFA, math team in knowledgeable. Our seventh grade, we had seventy-eight percent involvement. Eighth grade, seventy-one. Ninth grade, sixty-six. Tenth, sixty. Eleventh, sixty-three percent, and our seniors, forty-nine percent. Our awards and achievements. At the start of the meeting, we kind of went through all the cross-country soccer, volleyball, and football. Do want to add FFA. We had freshmen attended the regional leadership conference. Best in form dreamed hand took sixth out of the ten spots. Our forestry team advances to the spring state convention. Ian Bakken advanced in poultry to spring state convention. Dylan Hoodley won prepared public speaking, and he'll compete December fifteenth at state convention. And our knowledgeable season has been underway. Our math team, we had one meet so far. Kinsley McKeever in first place, Zane Schulte and Graham Tallroo tied for fourth. And our Vikings team took first place in that, in the region. Our senior high math team competed in AMC twelve and AMC ten competitions. Some of our things that we've just kind of kicked off. Our dance started October twentieth. Junior high girls just got underway not long ago. Girls' basketball started last week, and our fall band concert was not long ago as well. Today, boys' basketball and wrestling started. Tomorrow, we have our choir concert. December sixth and seventh is our Wonka or Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. So that will be Saturday and Sunday for that. I've been busy working on our fall scheduling already. I want to continue building relationships with students, families, and staff members. And as Mr. Cork said earlier, thank you to all of our coaches, our advisors, all of the fall workers at all of our events, you know, volunteering and helping out at those events. I've been very thankful. School board, hire Jan Eric Lindberg as our junior high girls' basketball coach. And we also just did the resolution of our Form A application on the Minnesota State High School League. So that is money that is used to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extra critical participation in our activities. And lastly, I'm a busy man. I appreciate everybody and their support and everything this fall, and just enjoy my time. Any questions?
Questions? I don't hear anything. Thank you. Ms. Janaszewski.
High School enrollment is at three hundred and sixty-nine. October thirtieth was already the end of quarter one, and I learned from my girls today that we're already fifty days into the school year, so we're almost a third of the way. Parent-teacher conferences were last Monday. We had, we had pretty good attendance. When I walked through the gym, it was pretty steady, so I think teachers were pretty happy with that. Mrs. Lage sent out letters to students that we felt like were at-risk students. And then she also really focused on juniors and seniors who are at risk of not graduating on time. She does a great job with that. October thirty-first and November first, staff development days. This was some really good work time in the afternoon for our staff, but in the morning, on the thirty-first, we had a staff meeting, recapped quarter one, went over A&amp;I district, A&amp;I and district goals. That was kind of a review for me to give to staff after our October school board meeting. I thought it was nice for them just to kind of hear some of those words. We also talked about advisory time. This is new this year with students. Just want to get some feedback from staff on how they're using that. We had a wellness check-in with Monica Schneider. Our wellness committee met and started planning some events for the holiday season here for staff. PLC, BLT meetings, staff met in the afternoon in their departments, went over MCA scores, reviewed their five ins and outs. So the ins would be what they'd like them to know when they are coming into that class or grade, and then out is what they expect them to know as they leave the class. And then did some standards review after they looked at the MCA test scores. And then our English department did their first part of CAPD read basics training. I want to say we have one or two more with that, and that'll be after we test students with CAPD, and she will go over results with us after we test. Minnesota Honor Society hosted their blood drive. It was pretty well-attended, and it was good weather, which sometimes is not the case for blood drives. So thanks to Mrs. Lage and her Minnesota Honor Society students for hosting that. We had eighty-five veterans and their families here for our Veterans Day program. It was a really nice event. I always am looking forward now to the Quilts of Valor presentation for our veterans. I just think it's a really great way to get veterans on stage and for students to hear a little bit of their stories. So it's been a really good partnership with the BFW, specifically Jim Clemenson and Pastor Eric Schreian. Our global foods class hosted Holly students. This was a collaboration of Mrs. Hall and Mrs. Lage. It's one of our first A&amp;I visits. I know that elementary went to Powaw with second grade, but we got to bring some students here from Holly. Mrs. Hall planned some cooking. One of our students made homates ambusa for students to try from Holly. They watched A Hundred Foot Journey, and then they had a design contest where they had some white koozies that they had to create a logo for based on what they watched in that documentary. So really cool activity for them to end with. And then the Holly students also got to eat lunch with us. It was kind of a fun way for them to end their time. I attended the school law seminar in October. We had Micah Kovit here last week. He did one part of his video shoot. The Chamber is working on a commercial to highlight different parts of Pelican Rapids, so stay tuned for that. He always does some really fun things. And then Mrs. Lage and I were part of an early childhood advisory committee meeting. That was last week. And it was just a chance for Kristy Freigard to kind of ask a little bit about, introduce kind of what their class is doing, and then just get some feedback from us on industry trends. This is a class that our students take through West Central Initiative. It's where they can earn eighteen credits if they complete all of the classes. And we do that in collaboration with Battle Lake and Perm. So it's been a really good class. We are in the second year of that. Upcoming next Wednesday, if you're in, we will be playing Turkey Bingo. So here are students gomeling through the hallway. At the end of the day, we are playing bingo. No school next Thursday and Friday. Just a few items for staff meeting, PLCs, BLT. And then December twenty-third, we are planning some afternoon activities again for our students to head them off into mentorship. Couple of agenda items. I have hired Stephanie Urbano. She will replace Sharice Guermel as our ELL parent professional. And then hire Sarah Lindberg as our advisor for Celebration Cultures. She has done this for the last year, and now will be officially the advisor. Any questions?
Any questions? No, I don't hear any. Thank you. How about Mr. Marcus?
Find out, sir.
Sounds great. All right. Open three first financial statement, yeah. Here's Ryan Mark. We are, just finished the month of October. As you can see, that year-to-date comparison against our budget, so far, we have collected four... so far we have collected $4.2 million in revenue. Driving the big jump from last month to this month was a part of our levy was deposited. So that's why you see that jump in revenue. And then I'll highlight it in our cash flow statement. Right now, we are sitting at about 25% of our budget to actual revenue that we approved in our budget. In terms of expenditures, we're right at about $3.8 million out of the $16 million that we budgeted for. So we're at about 24%. This is the first month that I saw that we were actually had more revenue generated than expenditures. Normally, we're playing catch-up because of the accrued concept of revenue in the state. But it's pretty cool to see that. So here is our budget to actual report. We're gonna start focusing more on our efficiency. So one of the things that I proposed to Mr. Corp is we're gonna change the concept of the board report just a little bit better to give you guys a little bit more high-level insight into where these numbers come from and just a roadmap so it's easier to understand for you guys. But overall, budget to actual, we're on track. So that's pretty good. We'll move on to the second page, which is our cash flow statement. Cash flow statement, we started our investment account with $4.5.4 million. We received $1.5 million in revenue that consisted of some federal dollars that we're starting to draw down. And then I did a transfer from our checking account to our investment account of $1 million to capitalize on our investments just so we can gain some more dividends. And I'll point out where that is. Throughout the month, we drew down from our investments $936,000 to cover all of our liabilities. So at the end of the month, we had just a little over $6 million in our investment account. We started our cash on hand in our checking account with just a little over $4,000. We received $2.5 million in revenue. Part of that was that levy. Our levy was worth about $1.4 million. What you see in accounts payable, truly, the total amount of bills was $868,000. The $1 million that you see in here is the $1 million that we took from our checking account and then we brought over to our investment account. So that's where you see that money reflected. That's why accounts payable seems significantly inflated. But it really, it's a transfer from our checking to our investment account. Total payroll for the month was $432,000. Included in that month, it's actually not included. That was just last week. So overall, standard payroll. Total cash on hand at the end of the month, $222,000. Or total cash on hand of investment plus checking account, just under $6.3 million. The last pages of the report is just all of the payables that run through our checking account. So I'm not going to spend any time on that. What I will spend a little bit of time on is just kind of going through some key highlights of the audit, just to kind of give you guys a couple of things in terms of the key findings and key findings. And also where we truly sit in terms of the find-out. So the findings, right? So it's some of the things that the auditors find. And essentially what they're telling us, hey, you need to do things here a little bit better. And when it comes to auditors, there is no gray area. It's either all or none, right? So the first one was preparation of the financial statements. We're gonna get that one every single year. Reason for is because we're hiring them. And then they write you up for it, which is quite funny. Then material journal entries, they will always write you up for it, which is also somewhat funny because at the end of the year, they give you the adjusted journal entries based on their interpretation of our financials. So they give us the journal entries. And when they give them to us, they write us up for it. Just funny concept. And then segregation of duties, we're a small district. We will always have this one as well, all small districts have. Right? Normally, when you go into an enterprise, in a corporate office, you have somebody that's accounts payable, someone who does accounts receivables, someone who does taxes, someone who does cassettes. So everything is very separated. We're here, it's, our office is two people, Emily and I. So we're always gonna be written up for that. The fourth finding was a lack of supporting time cards for hourly employees. This is the year two of our project that we started doing. So public education, or just public schools in general, we do what is called annualized pay. So in terms of annualized pay, what it does is when we hire a support staff member, this concept was very popular. And it's because, it's to add efficiencies. But essentially, you true up their hours based on their number of duty days. And then you equate what their annual salary is going to be. And then you monitor when they clock in, they clock out, and things like that. And then you do a true-up at the end of the year, right? About three years ago, a Gatsby center came in where they said, no, if you're a truly an hourly employee, you have to clock in, you have to clock out. So we're in transition. This is the first year where we told employees that that shift is gonna change and it's gonna come. And we're no longer going to do annualized pay. So that's gonna go away. Starting next summer is all hourly employees are gonna have to clock in and they're gonna have to clock out. And the hours that you put in, in your time card, that is what you're going to be compensated for. So versus what we do in terms of annualized pay, right? And essentially, that big thing for that is wage theft, right? They don't want anybody abusing public dollars. So they're really cracking down on public entities. So that is something that we're gonna start to really emphasize with a lot of our support staff to say, if you're not used to, if you're not used to clocking in and clocking out, just know that come next July, it's going to be a requirement. A lot of the times, we have to, we beat up our supervisors and we say, hey, you need to remind this employee they gotta clock in. You need to remind this employee they gotta clock out. And luckily, it's, the system that we've been using with our service provider, it's very user-friendly where as long as you are connected with our, within our network, you can clock in and clock out. So we've added some of those efficiencies. We're just waiting for it to catch up. But starting next fiscal year, that's going to be a requirement. So we're using this year as transition to train staff to really move into that second stage. Then the last finding was really a credit card receipt. So they tested the entire year of credit card transactions. And they pulled 20 transactions and they said, Rudy, give us supporting documentation. And I had everything, ball one, from when we went to state in basketball. And Mr. Brugman decided to stop to eat at Clearwater Night and he didn't get a receipt for when he stopped to eat at Clearwater. And I was like, ah, I'm not gonna bother him, he has retirement. So for that, we got written up for that. So overall, very clean audit, very pleased with some of the work that ABALE does. So today, in your business item, you're gonna see the approval to accept that audit. ABALE has been a wonderful partner. The only thing that we have pending in our audit is our single audit that has to deal directly with federal dollars. And there's nothing that ABALE did wrong, nothing that the school district did wrong. It simply is the lack of support from the federal government opening up the clearinghouse and giving us guidelines on what they need to test on. So we're just kind of holding until the federal government says, all right, here is everything you need to test this year on, and then we're gonna start. So most likely, I'm gonna be busy again doing the federal audit in January, February time. But state audit is complete. Any questions regarding the audit that you guys want to ask that you didn't feel comfortable asking? Courtney?
Rudy, you might have mentioned this, but there was, I apologize if I missed it just now. One of the findings was the inactive activity accounts. Did you go over that part?
Nope, I didn't. So, and I will go over that. So that's with the Minnesota legal compliance. So that has to deal with Chapter 14. Chapter 14 is what governs our student activity accounts. And there is a small fine print that says if there's no activity, then you have to retire them. And then you take those funds and then you disperse them against all of them. We challenged that particular concept and we challenge it for one thing. Because a lot of the dormant activity accounts is because there's a transition in advisor and eventually will come back on. So we wrote a district memo saying we want to keep them open even though they're inactive because we know that eventually it will pick up again. So that's what they had to do in terms of that. So again, I don't think it would be fair. So say, for example, it happened with our preschool activity account. So back in the early 2000s, we used to charge tuition. And then parents started donating money for helping with supplies and things like that. So over the last 20-some years, we've carried over $4,000 balance on a student activity account called BPK, right? And then last year, they just didn't have any activity. But I'm not gonna take that money and then disperse it against all of them because Tara already communicated with me that she wants to order magazines this year for the BPK program. Had we had done that in July, I would have told Tara, sorry, your money is gone. So that's where we disagree with the auditors and the finding came for. Came for, yeah. Great question, great question.
Anything else? Stacy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did, sorry. What about the food service excess? Like, do we have a plan for those funds?
Yes, we do, Ms. Almeris. So the governance for the food service funds is by federal regulations. We can only have three operating months of revenue in our food service fund balance. And we're way above over that. And the reason why we have such a high fund balance in our food service fund is because when COVID hit, not only did we get additional monies for the meals that we were giving, but then USDA was taking care of all the costs. So we practically made double the money on a meal that we gave. We have this surplus and what we've done over time is we've updated equipment when Jess or Trudy let us know that they need something. So for example, this year and last year, both kitchens informed us that it gets extremely hot in there and they needed some type of ventilation system. So we wrote to the state and we say, hey, over the excess funds that we have in the food service fund, we're going to add some type of standalone HVAC system to bring the temperature down because it gets really hot in there. So some of those things, what we use it for. Another piece that we're looking into is with the community survey that we got in terms of providing healthier options, in terms of giving a better menu of less package, more protein, less sugar. We can use this surplus to help improve some of those student meals that we can provide. So that's what it's there for. That's what it's used, should be used for. When we think about equipment, we just have to get approval by the state before we purchase anything over $5,000. But other than that, yeah, that's our intent is to make our meals better with that surplus. Yeah, great question. Thank you for that.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, just looking at our district priorities. First one is community engagement. Quite a few community engagements here throughout the school year that our staff have been involved in, our administration have been involved in. So if you scroll down, Mrs. Evanson, if you look at September, if you look at September, look at all activities that we're engaged with our local community, with businesses, if it's going out and in our community, doing different things. You got like visiting Pelican Valley, you got the homecoming activities, the Viking Gala, the food backpacks, working with United Way to help our families out. And then our local businesses that we worked with either visiting them or bringing them into our school. If you look at October, kind of the same thing. Blue Bash was in October. A lot of kids did some games and face painting there. So we worked with our organizations there. Career Fair, just so you know, at Rotary, working with Mrs. Jay and Mrs. Lage on getting different representatives of different workforce to come in and talk to our students. And so we're working with our area businesses there. And then again, local businesses that came in. If you go to November, it was stated here a little bit about our veterans breakfast and program. If you look, you know, if we looked at community engagement with Phase 4 Training with MSBA, they talked about community engagement. How do you bring in people? One of the questions is how do you bring in people that no longer have kids or grandkids? And the veterans breakfast and program was a great way to bring in a lot of those people into our building. So we get the lead parade, different parades. We've got the lead parade here in November. The blood drive is a great bringing people in. And then the Pelican Rapids Community Video that we're working on with the Chamber. So, and then Community Ed, Mrs. Montcher talked about how her and Mr. Hubbard are bringing in Lauren Line. Great way to bring in people into our building. So going back up, increased student enrollment in November. For K-12, we're at 828 students. And then pre-K-12, we're at 930. So if you compare it to last May, we're up from last May. Other priorities, some transparent financial practices. Tonight, you heard about it. And I want to thank Mr. Martinez and Mrs. Evanson for all their work with the audit. District goals, one of our goals is MCA reading and math proficiency rates for free and reduced students will increase by 3%. You've heard our principals talk about different things they've been doing. Just a couple reminders, how we're implementing new math curriculum at the elementary and at the high school. And aligning standards, language art standards. K-12, our goal is by next spring is that language art standards are aligned. K through 12, elementary aligned them this summer. And then interventions, interventions that are being offered to, at the elementary, at the high school to help kids improve in math and reading. MSBA Phase 4 Training, Mr. Sorin and I attended part A of Phase 4 and will complete part B here Wednesday evening. MSBA conference is January 15th and 16th. Just a reminder, if you've not communicated with Mrs. Evanson, please do that for hotel rooms. And then school board agenda items. There's one item that under business, and that's approve the EAP contract with Lakeland Mental Health Center. And that's a contract for all our staff and their families. That's three free sessions during one year. So that's the contract with Lakeland Mental Health to offer those services. So I think... I think that's about it, fall break. Those talks abouts coming up here. And then the next school board meeting is December 15th. That's all I have.
True that taxation also?
Yep.
Yep. Any questions for Mr. Corp? Okay. Let's move on to consent items. And may approve board meeting minutes from the October 27, 2025 special school board meeting. B, financial claims, October bills. C, treasurers report. D, personnel acknowledge the resignation of Lisa Cap. A special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Acknowledge the resignation of Charis Guirmall. Sharice Guirmall as ELL paraprofessional at the high school. Prove the hire of Emily Evanson as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Prove the hire of Stephanie Urbano as ELL paraprofessional at the high school. Prove the hire of Lucas Verdorn as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Prove the hire of Jan Eric Lindberg as junior high girls' basketball coach at the high school. And prove the hire of Sarah Lindberg as Celebration of Cultures advisor at the high school. So we have a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent items.
Motion by Andrew, we have a second. Second by Molly. Discussion. There are no discussions, the consent items, all is paper of the motion, signified by saying aye, and this will be roll call. Andrew?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye. Molly?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Consent items carry. So just a few business items here. We have approved the resolution accepting donations. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the donations?
Motion.
Motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
Second here.
Second by Greg. So this is a resolution. First of all, any discussion before we do the resolution? Resolution accepting donations, whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members, expressing such terms in full. Therefore be it resolved, School Board of Pelican Rapids Public Schools, ISB 548 gratefully accepts following donations as identified below. So we have Laura Clemmick, she gave eighty dollars for student accounts. Laura Clemmick, eighty dollars, Viking Boutique. Joanne Burb, twenty dollars, Samtastic Scholarship. Roadlight Lutheran Church, one hundred and fifty dollars, Viking Boutique. Dunn Township, Dunn Villa Lions, six hundred and eighty dollars to student accounts. G and J Hablin, fifty dollars for prom. G and P Beach, twenty dollars, FFA in memory of Rick Evanson. Multiple donors, one hundred and fifteen dollars, PRHS Scholarship fund in memory of Rick Evanson. And Faith Lutheran Church, WBLCA, two hundred dollars Viking Boutique. So this is a resolution, so Greg, do you resolve?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Molly? Excuse me, Stacy? Sorry.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Next one is to approve the resolution of, resolution of Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Do we have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion by Greg, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion before I read the resolution? Okay. Resolution, the governing board supporting Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is formed to provide support for Minnesota high school youth that participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of Pelican Rapids Public Schools, ISB 548, recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletics and fine arts programs. Therefore be it resolved, the governing board of Pelican Rapids Public Schools, ISB 548, supports the school application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a, for a grant to offset student activity fees. So this is a resolution, so Andrew, do you resolve?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Molly?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Okay. This one is, I, I see as approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven EAP contract with Lakeland Mental Contract copy is on the website if we wanted to take a look at it, but, so entertain a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve that contract.
Motion by Andrew, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Any discussion on that, the motion? There is no discussion, all is in favor of approving the contract motion, signified by saying aye, and this will be by resolution again, so Greg?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D is to approve and accept the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five audit. I'm gonna make the motion to approve and accept the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five audit. Second by Andrew. Any discussion on the audit? There is no discussion on approving my motions. Signified by saying aye, and it will be roll call again. Andrew?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Molly?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion carries. So ten, upcoming meetings, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting, and truth of taxation will be at six PM. January fifth will be a reorganization and regular meeting, six PM. And then MSBA conference, January fifteenth, sixteenth of next year. So do we have a motion to approve your? Make a motion. Motion by Andrew? Do we have a second? Second by Molly. Any discussion? All is in favor of adjourning, signified by saying aye, and it will be roll call again. So Greg?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.